Hello and welcome to Community the Whole, District Squamish. It is September 20th, is that correct?
Correct.
September 20th, it's a beautiful day at the corner of Perth and Boulevard. And I'd like to welcome you to the traditional territories of the Squamish Nation. Could I have a motion to drop the agenda, please? Moved by Council Stoner, seconded by Council Anderson, proposed, motion carries. Onto our first and only order of business today, an active transportation update. We've got Dora Gunn here with us.
Thank you, good morning. I'm Dora Gunn, Transportation Planner with the District of Squamish. Very excited to be here with you today on the last council bike tour of this council. We organized a lovely day for you. As usual, we are going to be talking about active transportation infrastructure, both capital and a little bit of development. I will be presenting at some of the stops and Jesse Morewood, our Manager of Capital Projects, will be presenting at some. We have about 10 stops and hoping to squeeze it into about an hour and a half. So to start us off, the first stop we wanted to talk about is Perth Drive. We have discussed Perth in the past, but a few things have changed, so I wanted to provide an update. So Perth Drive is one of our major collectors in residential areas. We'll talk more about those later on. There's been a history of speeding complaints on Perth, which have been backed up with traffic counter data. We did a survey in spring of 2021, looking at Perth as well as Highland's Way North, considering traffic calming and active transportation infrastructure. And one of the strongest feedbacks that we got from the public was better active transportation infrastructure on Perth Drive. So following that survey, we set to work looking at detailed design. And we came up with a design on both sides of the street, from the boulevard to Portree, to upgrade both sides, and the cost came back at 1.2 million, which is quite high. So we, for that sort of section. So we did apply for a grant, which was not successful. After that, we felt that to try to proceed on our own with that level of cost, only being the first phase, was perhaps not the best use of active transportation dollars. So we went back to the drawing board to see what we could do that would be different. And what we've come up with is operating only one side of the road. This allows us to go much further up the road with our initial build out. However, because we're not doing both sides at once, it does require a slightly different design. So the proposal is to remove the downhill bike lane and replace that with a sidewalk. We would retain the environmentally sensitive ditch. So we did take this concept back out to the public with another survey, and we received a fairly positive response, so 65% in support. Some of the concerns were the difficulty of passing. Presumably bikes won't be running on the sidewalk too much, there'll be little children, so. The cost, and then the need for other infrastructure elsewhere. So those were the primary things we heard on the negative side. There is luckily an alternative route for bikes, for most bikes at least, to go on Highland's Way North, so that overcomes some of the challenges there. So we do have the project in the 2023 budget proposed. It's a 44% DCC project, and the rest is covered by Community Works Fund. It also has the benefit of narrowing the road, which tends to lead to slower speeds. So we're both improving active transportation infrastructure and potentially lowering vehicle speeds on this road. That's it for me on this stop.
So we'll be in recess until our next stop, and where is our next stop?
Can we ask questions?
Oh, question, oh, sorry. Yeah, we can do that, too. I was just keen to get through all the stops in the timeframe, but yes, absolutely. Any questions from council?
I know it's a collector road and this question comes up a lot from the public, but would you put speed bumps on it or other traffic calming measures once we narrow the road?
Chair, thank you. Yes, so we do try not to do speed bumps or speed tables on collector roads, major collectors. Major collectors are really important for emergency access in particular, but also transit, and also just getting cars where they need to go efficiently. So instead of doing speed bumps, we look to improve active transportation infrastructure, and we can narrow the road, too. That also slows speeds, but we don't do that speed bumps on major collectors.
Council Stoner?
Thank you, through the chair. I'm wondering if you can just remind me where we're at with the Community Works Fund? Because I know there were some changes in that program and how we're managing what is left in that budget. And then my other question was an update on our efforts to try and reduce speed limits kind of across the district.
Sure. So I can't speak to the whole Community Works Fund. I can just, I would see if maybe Gary or somebody else could chime in on that. But I can speak to the part that is dedicated to active transportation. So as a whole, the fund that we have currently needs to be spent by March 2024. So there is a certain amount left to be spent. And of that, we have about 1.5 million dedicated to active transportation, plus an additional amount for Perth Drive. So I actually don't know what those two add up to exactly, but. So it'll cover the regular active transportation budget, possible support, and then also Perth Drive. Thank you.
Yeah, Council Anderson?
Sorry, apologies, apologies. Thank you. So we are planning to use some money that we have. Okay, so stepping back for a second, there was initially this thought that the Ministry of Transportation Infrastructure was going to provide this pilot project opportunity. They have not come forward with that. There has been no indication that they are going to come forward with that. It's been a long time now that we've been waiting. So we have decided that we need to do something else instead. We do have money that was set aside for that project. So the plan now is to hire a consultant to help us make a plan as to how we can proceed without that MOTI pilot project. So we will be issuing a contract for that this year and then getting that underway. So it'll be for the new next council.
Council Anderson?
Yes, a little bit off topic from the Perth infrastructure, but we're standing beside a roundabout at the top of the Boulevard there. We've just seen a lowbed truck go through it. There will always be trucks using the roundabout, but for pedestrians, for cyclists, how is this particular design working? And it's one of the original ones here. Would you care to comment on that or any of our engineering staff?
You know what, that's a great question. Sorry, Jesse Morewood, Capital Projects Manager. We are going to stop for the next roundabout, and that's part of the conversation topic. So could we, could we?
Very good, thank you.
And then talk a little? Council Penney?
Just want to make sure I understand, so the plan for Perth at this time is a sidewalk and no painted bike lane, is that?
That is correct.
And is the expectation then that cyclists would use the sidewalk or?
No, so typically we don't encourage biking on the sidewalk. That's not what bikes are supposed to do. Occasionally little children do that. So cyclists could, so many of the mountain bikers that come down here, they're going fast, they're often in groups, they're going to be just fine on the road. There is also the option of them biking on Highland's Way North as well. So there is an alternate route adjacent that works quite well. The only time that that won't work is if someone's coming from west, for example, and trying to get to the hill up there. But they're going to be biking on the road if there's no bike lane on the uphill side anyways currently. So we haven't really changed that for them too much, perhaps on the way home a little bit, but.
And there's just simply not enough room for a painted lane with sidewalks, is that the issue?
Yes, so in the, in the full build out, once we are able to do both sides, or if there's additional funding for the other side, we are going to be able to have an on-street bike lane on the downhill side and a raised bike lane on the uphill side. So a full build out, there will be space. Currently, we just don't have enough because we need to do storm infrastructure on one side to allow that extra space to create bike lanes. We just can't build it in this first place.
Okay. We're good for this stop? Thank you for the reminder. Okay, so we'll be in recess till our next stop, which is the, is it the roundabout down the Boulevard? Is that our next stop? But we'll see you there. We're in recess, thank you. Welcome back to Community the Whole. We're at, this is the top of Highland's Way South at the intersection of the Boulevard. And Jesse Morewood's going to help us.
Thank you, good morning. Jesse Morewood, Capital Projects Manager with the District of Squamish. We're at the roundabout of Highland's Way South and the Boulevard. We've just recently completed a multi-use path around the Boulevard. The purpose of this project was that this, this roundabout is really kind of the main gateway to the upper Highlands. And we identified that there was no kind of adequate biking infrastructure to get around the roundabout. There was a sidewalk previously, but again, we're really trying to discourage cyclists from being on the road. There is a elementary school quite near us, so there's kids traveling to the school. And again, for the community to get to or from the upper Highlands to the rest of Squamish, they do need to pass through this roundabout. So this project is the start of one of the projects in this area to improve the infrastructure to the Highlands. Effectively, we built a three-meter multi-use pathway around the roundabout with some improved changes to the lighting. Some of the challenges were property issues. We, especially on our, on our side here, we were really quite tight to property lines. So we had to make some adjustments. Same on the other side with the topography, it was challenging. I think since we built it, a lot of the wins is we've seen to be well-used. We are also able to move some of the, there was some encroachment from private properties, hedges, that type of things. We were able to push that back a little bit and create some more public space as part of the project. And overall, I think it's been a great success so far.
Thank you. Council? Council Stoner?
Through the chair, so can you clarify? We're now expecting bikes to be on the sidewalk or a multi-use path. All right. And then going up and down the hill, are the cyclists meant to be on the sidewalk as well? Or are they meant to be on the road as they go up and down the hill?
What do you think?
Through the chair, I'm going to actually talk about Highland's Way South next, actually at this stop.
I'll wait.
Thank you for the question, through the chair. Yes, this is a multi-use pathway, so the purpose of this is for cyclists and pedestrians to be on this new paved multi-use path. Going maybe to an earlier question about, about trucks. Again, because of vehicles, we're taking up a lot of the space, especially large trucks going around the roundabout. Again, we really wanted to separate the cyclists from the vehicle traffic, which is the reason why we built this.
Go ahead, Marylin.
Is there like a best practice design for roundabouts? We have a few different iterations. The one in the business park, most people don't know how to get around, and there's no active transportation sort of designated lane there. This one's got a workaround for bikes, the one up there, different. So we've got different things going on. Is there a place we want to get to in terms of a best practice for roundabouts?
Through the chair, yes, there is. And this one is fairly close to it. So the idea typically is to have the bikes not in the vehicle lane, whether that be on their own bike path or a shared path. And then at the edges of every arm, you have a space where they can cross. Now, this one, just due to the way that it's designed, the crossing is actually up there, but the other crossings are closer to the roundabout, which is typical. The roundabout at Commercial is one that we actually want to revisit the design of. It is a challenging roundabout to use. And the roundabout up there also would be excellent if we could treat it the same way as this one. This one was a priority just because the volume is higher here, but yes, ideally that will look the same.
Council Stoner?
Thank you, through the chair. So just thinking about the flow of bicycles on the multi-use path, when they then are expected to cross at the crosswalk, technically a cyclist is meant to get off their bike, right? To use a crosswalk? And so I'm just curious how we start to communicate that to drivers and cyclists and pedestrians? What the expectation is when a bike actually comes up to a crosswalk? And is that a, like, really viable? We expect cyclists to actually use that?
Yes, that's a good question. So I personally use it a lot, and interestingly, those cars will all stop for you. So it actually functions quite well. However, it could be a better design if we actually had it as a cross-ride, where cyclists are then permitted to ride on their bikes across. So that is something that we will look into here. And we do have cross-rides in other places in town.
Council Penney?
What's the difference between a cross-ride and a crosswalk visually or?
A cross-ride has what they call elephant's feet, which is these little squares of paint along either side of the crosswalk. So it functions for both bikes and pedestrians, sorry, yeah, bikes and pedestrians.
Yeah, which you'll notice, we haven't seen on a map, where we have green paint, it's usually a cross-ride, right? So there's, there's those edges, those elephant's feet.
So I have a question. This is, you can tell it's pretty new and we're here to show off and talk about its functioning. Is additional paint part of the project? Because there's not an indication sort of on the uphill side that this is the intended path. And similarly, on the exit, will there be a drop or something to finally the cyclists back onto the, to the bike lane to continue on down the hill? Is that part of this project as well or an additional?
Yes, I believe there is a drop on that side, right? The park is a little bit in the way.
Yeah. There is a drop there, yes. There is, there's no parking sign, so I've noticed it might be approaching a little bit. It's a great question. It's not part of the design. It can be added. Often with, often with new projects, you kind of see how they function. It's not an exact science, so often we see how they function and make improvements. So yeah, it's something we'll kind of monitor and we'll kind of watch. And if we feel we need to make changes, we will.
Council, any further questions at this stop? Where are we headed next? Or another topic?
Another topic at this stop, yeah.
Sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
So I also wanted to touch on Highland's Way South, which we've discussed before on the council bike tour. We had a really good look at Highland's Way South. It's close to 20% of the population of Squamish lives up in the Highlands. And there is really no great bike route to inform the Highlands currently, unlike Rockendale or Valley Plant Ridge is actually quite bikeable. The only two routes are Highland's Way South and Skyline, and they both have significant challenges. So last year, we looked at a project, the design, to try to widen both the downhill bike lane and create an uphill bike lane on Highland's Way South. As we were going through the design for that project, we ran into an issue, which was with snow clearing. Highland's Way South is also probably the top most challenging route for the public works team to deal with with snow. And they identified that in order to keep that route open, they really need the full curb-to-curb distances they already have. That allows vehicles going down, one vehicle going up, and then possibly stuck vehicles to still be also there, and they can still get by with their plows. So that constrained our project, which meant really that we can't do much to improve the downhill bike lane, which is really unfortunate because it's a bit narrow. It does function as long as you go slowly. So we have now refocused our energy on this project, and we're going to look at the uphill side. Because right now, there is only a sidewalk on the uphill side, which is really inadequate. And with more and more people riding e-bikes, it becomes more and more problematic because it's very difficult to pass. And so if you have either a slower cyclist or a pedestrian with an e-bike behind, it's a challenge the whole way up. So we are now looking at the concept for that uphill side. The current plan is to have a on-street bike lane buffered, well buffered from traffic for most of the way, except there'll be a little pinch point where they have to ramp up on the sidewalk briefly, where the, where the road is really narrow, and then they'll ramp back down. I think this will function pretty well. We're hoping to get through concept into detailed design and possibly build either 2023 or 2024 for that project.
Council Anderson?
Yes, I take it from your comments, there may be some redesign of the uphill sidewalk. Are there cheaper options than concrete? A natural surface, if you like, another alternate surface that could work for our aims there? I believe there's also a lot of infrastructure under there, if I'm not mistaken, from the 1970s when it was built. Are there other options for cheaper options and more, and at least as effective options for surfacing, for example, here where we may be widening that path?
Sure, I can jump in. Thanks for the question, through the chair. Asphalt is cheaper than, than concrete. It generally doesn't last quite as long. As far as hard surfaces, there's not, there's not any kind of obvious project products rather than asphalt. Again, we're, most of the, of the work that Dora is describing, we used to use the existing, we might use the existing roadway, so the existing asphalt. So it's, no, we're not tearing up at all the road. There's some, again, some small connections at the top and at the bottom of the road that we're going to have to use with demolition and either choose probably asphalt or.
Thank you.
Just the way the roads flow and based on some of your comments, I, I sort of get the impression that it is intended for people to ride on the sidewalk on the way up, or is that not intentional?
Through the chair, that's a tricky question to answer. And also, I suppose, what I consider to be a sidewalk is something that looks like that. So it's concrete with the little bumps, whereas this is asphalt multi-use path. So on the downhill side, they're on a bike lane, so it's an asphalt bike lane, although it is raised. On the uphill side, we are trying very hard to get them off the current sidewalk. And so they'll be predominantly on the road, but with a buffered bike lane.
But today, why is it preferred?
Oh, today? There is no good option of coming up Highland's Way South right now. I mean, people, I see people riding on the sidewalk, and I see people riding on the road. Both are not great.
I'm not sure what to do, so.
I see no other questions. I have a question. What, what is the grade of Highland's Way South?
The steeper part of it is 12%.
And generally, what are our guidelines around active transportation that we're shooting for, for in the way of gradient?
So ideally, you don't want to go above 8%. We do allow up to 12% in some cases, but ideally not for long distances.
Thank you. Okay, so I think that concludes this spot. Okay, and where are we headed next?
We're headed down to Skyline.
Okay, so we'll be back on, we'll be back with you on Skyline, and the meeting is in recess. Hold on. We are back from our recess, and we are at the Switchback on Skyline Drive. So I'll pass it over to Miss Gunn to go send in what's happening here.
Thank you. So this, what is happening here is a project that is in process. It is also part of improving access to the Highlands for bikes. Skyline is also very constrained, like Highland's Way South, with the grades and with the property lines, there is limited ability for us to really improve Skyline. What we have been able to do is to create a dedicated uphill bike lane. So that was really the primary goal of this project. This involved changing some of the lane lines around to widen that uphill bike lane, particularly at the hairpin. The way the grades work, the closer to the edge of the hairpin you are, the steeper the grade. So we were trying to widen it out to make it a bit more bikeable. So the paint lines are in, a couple of the sensors are in. We're still waiting on the signs for this project, so it's not been fully implemented yet. Once we have the signs in place, there will be no parking in the uphill bike lane signs. Then we'll start to enforce that. We are, we just still currently have cars parking in the uphill bike lane. On the downhill side, the plan is to create a shared road for the portion where there can be no downhill bike lane. Starting around about here, there is actually space for downhill bike lane. So bikes will be able to then have their own lane from this point on towards Garibaldi Way. But above the hairpin, it will be a shared, a shared lane.
Really?
We've seen in other areas where there are bike lanes around tight corners, that we've put in no, no posts, just so that cars don't cut the corner. And I wonder if this is a treatment we might consider here?
We did consider that in this project. The challenge is that snow clearing is very important on that corner. Our bikes will not be able to make it up there. And so we decided not to do it. I have still wondered if there's something we could do there that's not a no post. But yes, so we did consider it, decided not to for that reason.
Is there, I mean, I don't know how those work, but we don't get snow all the time. I realize we grind a lot, but could we do them seasonally? So that for the majority of the year, they're there? And we, you know, we have different rules and also less bikes through the winter months?
So yes, the idea of removable delineators is a great idea. We have been looking around to try to find ones that could be removed, and that the part that remains behind would need to be flushed with the surface. Otherwise, the snow clearing will just take it out. We have yet to find a product that meets all these criteria, but that's not to say it isn't out there. So we'll continue to look, and if we do find a product like that, this would be a great spot to use it.
Council French?
So there's lots of great stuff here for vehicles and bicycles. How about pedestrians? Where do they fit into all of this?
We were super constrained with what we could do here. So pedestrians can choose to walk up and down either side. There's not obviously much room on the downhill side, so they're probably better suited on the uphill side. It's, it's a huge challenge. There is no good solution to that, unfortunately.
Council Anderson?
What kind of an engagement process might have been undertaken here with the immediate neighbors along Skyline? And the second part to that is, how do property lines come out in the, as a challenge here on this structure for, for the new, for the new lanes?
Thank you. So we have not yet engaged with the neighbors. We will do that before the signage is installed and before the enforcement begins. So that has not occurred yet, it will occur. As far as property lines go, sometimes if we have more space as far as the property goes, and we can do engineering solutions to try to widen a road, but without that property, I mean, you can also acquire a property, but that's extraordinarily expensive and very challenging in this particular instance due to the steep driveways and grades.
Thank you. Any further questions at this stop, council? Seeing none, we'll be in recess until we reach our next stop, which is?
Garibaldi and Talis.
Garibaldi and Talis. So we're in recess till then. And we are back from recess. We are at the corner of Mamquam and Glen Alder. And Miss Gunn, what are we covering here?
Thank you. So we are here to talk about a project that we have upcoming, which is for a new bike lane. It'll be on the north side of Mamquam, between Diamond Head Road and the highway. This creates the connection between the rest of the bike lanes we have, both east and west of here. And once this project is in place, and if we are able to upgrade Highland's Way South as planned, it'll create pretty much a seamless connection all the way from Government Road to Quest University, which is a really huge win. So this section is a missing section. The plan is to have an on-street bike lane, so continuing on from where there is an on-street bike lane to the east of Diamond Head Road. It will have an impact, a small impact, we hope, on parking in front of the local war. We are able to retain some of the parking, but we will lose a few stalls. We minimize that as much as possible. And then it will come in front of us right here and connect over to the highway crosswalk. Oh, and the other thing it will do is create a new push button for bikes to be able to cross Mamquam here. So if they're coming westbound and they're trying to then turn southbound on the corridor trail, right now people make a lot of very dangerous movements to do that. I'm sure some will still do that, but they will have the option to press the push button and cross at the crosswalk at the light, which is a great improvement. So this project is fully designed. It's a waiting sewer project, which is upcoming. Once that's complete, we'll move ahead on this project. We're anticipating sometime in 2023.
Council, questions on this thing? Council Penney?
What would be our obstacle to do a bike crossing just north of Diamond Head Road there? For example, I think that's the one, like, right?
Just to clarify, so like a crosswalk or a bike cross-ride for bikes?
So if you're coming west, you can cross over to that side here, both for downtown?
So we could install an additional crosswalk there, but there's no light. So it could work. This road does tend to get very busy, though, and it could still be a bit of a challenge here. You'll be able to push the button and then trigger the light, which will then stop all the traffic for you. So that was the thinking, but it's something we could look into.
So seeing no questions right now, I'll take, take one. For the, sorry, Jenny, did you have it?
I did. I'm just wondering if you can speak a little bit more to the interaction between the bike lane and the parking that will remain and how we're managing that?
Yes. So there is, we will lose, there's sort of a, kind of a small traffic lane. There's, there's two lanes of traffic. The smaller of the two, which is adjacent to the parking, we will lose that lane. That will become the bike lane. It will be well buffered from both the parked cars and the travel of the traveling.
So you'll have to cross the bike lane as a vehicle to go in and out of parking?
Yes, although perhaps Jesse can chime in here. I believe we're going to consider restricting the movements either in one direction or the other, out in and out of that parking lot, right?
Another design that's, that's a year old. Yes, we are, we are going to limit it. I believe we're going to prevent left turns there, and they're going to have to go to Diamond Head and come around, so again, minimizing that, that interaction.
This latter point is made by Jesse Morewood. Is this something that would be considered within the Garibaldi Estates Neighborhood Plan? As we know, Diamond, the neighbors in this area, very concerned already about the interface with the parking lot here. What kind of engagement would we undertake to reorient the entry and egress to this parking lot within the Garibaldi Estates Neighborhood Plan process or within the, the adjacent neighborhood, neighboring street?
Council Anderson, you're getting a little off from the active transportation focus, but if there's a ready answer, we'll, we'll take it, but just we'll try to stick to the active transportation if we can.
Thank you for the question. So this is not related to the Garibaldi Estates Neighborhood Plan project at all? So this is not related to the Garibaldi Estates Neighborhood Plan project at all. It's also largely a Pete's project, except for push button. So it's easily reversible if something in the future needs that that's necessary. For some reason, it's like, say something comes out of that Garibaldi Estates process, that it needs to be something different here, it's easily reversible. So it's not related to that. The second half of your question? Sorry, consultation, yes, thank you. There, there absolutely will be consultation before we go through that. Yes.
Thank you. So I'll take a stab at a question here. On this, on this section, so Glen Alder to, to the hi, to Highway ninety-nine. We know this intersection is a challenge and sometimes backs up into the intersection behind us. Are we losing any width of the drive path there? Or is it, or are we standing in the right of way where the bike, the new bike lane will be? Just I want to understand the spatial in this critical block here.
So for this block from Glen Alder to the highway, there will still be two travel lanes as there currently are. There's, they're so wide that we have enough space to get an on-street bike lane without moving the curb and without impacting the travel lanes.
And then the, this right in, right out will remain with canyon and canyon type? Any further questions at this spot? We'll recess again until we reconvene, I'm assuming on?
Near Willow Park.
Near Willow Park. We are in recess. Thank you. All right, we are back from recess and we are at Willow Park, corner of Willow and Mamquam. And Jesse Morwood, you need to give us an update on this spot.
Yeah, thank you. So we, this spring, we finished a active transportation improvement project, which included a new sidewalk and a unidirectional bike path. As well as an additional widened shoulder and, and on-street bike path on the opposite direction. This project was kind of medium priority, but we, we accelerated a little bit because there was a lot of other infrastructure projects that we were doing at the same time, including a new sewer system and repaving the road. So there was synergies to do this project at the same time as those other infrastructure projects. Maybe some of the kind of highlights of the project is we installed a number of trees, which we really don't always do because they're expensive and challenged to maintain. But we got really a lot of positive public feedback about them. So I, I think that was a really good decision and, and moving forward, something we'll incorporate more. It's, it's worth the extra time and money, I think, to do it. The other win was, there was a lot of, over the decades, a lot of encroachment of, of private hedges and fences into the public realm. As part of this project, we were able to, we needed required the space to build it. There was public land. What it created is created more green space and, and, and more kind of boulevard for public use. So I think it was really a win for multiple levels. I think that's, that's it.
Counsel?
I, I don't really have a question, but I have a comment. And this is one of my most favorite active transportation projects that I've seen in the eight years I've been on council. But it makes me think when we're doing new subdivision, new neighborhoods, the benefit of not having driveways and having laneways. Because all this protected infrastructure is so great because we don't have people exiting their driveways out onto the main road. And when we're thinking about new developments and thinking about how can we make that possible for more people in our community? Yeah, that's what it makes me think about. And the street trees are a huge addition. And the only thing I would suggest is that the thirty kilometer sign needs to be higher. There's a lot of vans that park along here. And when you're coming in this direction, you often don't see the thirty zone sign and bigger. That would be my only recommendation. Thank you. It's an awesome project.
Thank you. Any other comments here? No questions here? Yeah, well, go ahead. Okay.
I have a question. As we've been riding today as a group, which I've really enjoyed, we've got a mix of kinds of bikes, both acoustic and electric bikes and mountain bikes and mountain bikes. So as we're designing active transportation infrastructure, this is a great example. How are we thinking about those different pieces that the bikes are gonna be, gonna be moving? For instance, an e-bike that should be governed at thirty-five-ish, road, road cyclists get upwards of forty. And traveling on the roadway, traveling in our protected lanes, like how is that all sort of speed in and into the equation?
Uh, thank you. It's a really great question. It's something we struggle with all the time. With new projects, if, we often have to make a choice. So either we're designing it for those all ages and abilities users or, or designing it for the, the fast and confident users. When possible, we try to make sure we have both types of facilities. May not be exactly the same spot, but generally provide the same connectivity. So for example, the Government Road bike lanes are, are really fast, really great, awesome for our confident riders. And we maintain those to date as is. And we're hesitating to make changes that would make them slower, even though they might make them safer. Instead, we're focusing on other improvements like Discovery Trail, improvements to the corridor trail that are really great for our all ages and abilities users.
Anyone else at this, at this stop?
I just wanted to add, I, I wanted to touch on another topic at this general location. We've actually covered a lot of what I wanted to say already through questions in the tour, but I just wanted to touch on again the, the major collectors in residential areas that we've talked about a lot of times. So this is a great example of one of the major residential areas. We do have a number of other ones like Depot, Westway. And what we're trying to do is slowly move through concept designs, so what those might look like in the future. We do also have a DCC line item for those major collectors in residential areas. We talked about how it's difficult to put speed bumps as a traffic calling measure on those streets. Instead, we're looking at projects like this, which are much more expensive and also need much more planning to make sure they're working with the underground infrastructure. So we are slowly working our way through those. And I know that the public sees some of those as very high priority. For example, Government Road south of Depot is a very high priority. Also high priority for us. It's one of those ones where we hit a challenge with the timing of the underground infrastructure updates. So we have not forgotten about that project. It's super high on our list. We just need to work out the timing with the other capital projects.
And just to follow up to that comment around the timing. And I appreciate that there are some efficiencies. These people have the magnitude of the efficiencies. Besides going in and doing an active transportation piece and then coming back and doing the underground infrastructure in a year or two, given the, the sort of mixed timing and priorities of that. What order magnitude are we talking about with those synergies?
Thanks for the question. Well, I think it depends, right? I, I, I think it's unaffordable to install new infrastructure for the city and then rip it up a bit a few years later. So I think, I think it's just, it's not practical and not doable. Certainly, it, it does vary. It's like this project, you know, it had some synergies. It wasn't, so we were moving curb lines and installing curb lines, so there was some synergies. Other projects, it's absolutely critical, like the, like the government one. Like we would effectively have to rip up everything if we, we installed a new sidewalk. We would effectively have to rip that up potentially and, and put something new. So it, again, it varies from project to project, but it's, it's generally unaffordable to not find synergies.
Okay.
Yeah.
I appreciate that. Any other questions here? Okay, we're gonna be in recess until our next stop. And what's the next stop?
Uh, the next stop is Pioneer Way. So we'll, we'll bike down, across the Mamquam Bridge on Government and then head down Discovery Trail.
So we're in recess till then. Discovery Way. Thank you. All right, good. Welcome back to Committee the Whole. We are back from recess. We are on midpoint of Pioneer Way. And I'll turn it over to staff to fill us in with what's happening here.
Yeah, thank you. So this is a three-phase project of upgrading Pioneer Way. The, the start or end is at Queen's Way and eventually it will connect to Government near Centennial. Currently, we've completed the first phase. We are completing the intersection connection work. The intersection was, was separated from the first phase is that we realized with additional development in the North Yards that we needed better interaction with, with what was happening on the other side of the road, both from a traffic perspective as well as from an active transportation perspective. We're on the edge of, of the first phase and second phase to our, to my left. And so the second phase is, the contract is awarded and will be starting in the next month. It's gonna wrap around the corner to Aspen Road, which will be the end of, of the second phase and that will be complete either end of this year or early next year. The third phase will go from Aspen Road to Government. There's a kind of a long-term timeframe on that, which I believe is in the, in the five-year plan. As far as kind of wins on this project, we are building a multi-use path, a lit multi-use path beside the road the entire direction. It is separated from traffic. It will connect to the Discovery Trail, so it's gonna be really excellent. Not only an east-west to the new development in the North Yards, but also up to north, north-south as well. What else? Yeah, I think, I think that's, that's it.
Counsel, questions at this time?
Sorry, I might add one more thing. There's two kind of main reasons why we kind of initiated this project. And then first of all is to give better north-south connectivity in this area. And it was also to provide access to employment lands. There's a, there's, this is more kind of the north side of the business park. There's, there's a lot of both orphaned properties that don't currently have road access as well as there is district land behind us. And then again, further lots to the north, so this road is gonna provide access to those employment lines.
Counsel Anderson.
In paying for these upgrades, will there be latecomers that we're taking into account for a certain portion of the route that we will, that is derived or, or pulled monies from to, to complete upgrades? Are there differences in who pays and, and how we pay for these, for these upgrades along this route?
Sure, maybe I can start. I believe the, the big portion of the funding is, is DCC funding and with the remainder being taxation. As far as latecomers, maybe I can pass it to Mr. Buxton or Mr. Buck.
Yes. In response, no, there's no latecomers. It's a DCC-funded project. You can't latecome. You have to pick one or the other. So this is DCC-funded, so no, there won't be any direct contributions from the adjacent properties, except through DCC payments, which they will make. I guess they will.
I didn't catch the last bit, Mr. Buxton, except for?
Well, when, when they develop, they will pay development cost charges, so they pay that way.
Yes. Thank you.
Counsel Stone, any other question?
Yeah, just in terms of, we were talking earlier about trying to find synergies when we do kind of road and active transportation work. Did we upgrade or was there already sewer water and everything under here? Or is that to be updated, one needs to develop?
Any further question? There is a fortis line that's being kind of moved as part of this. And we're also twinning a sewer line for future use. So we're building it now because we're, we're exposing the road and then, and then we'll use it when we need it in the future.
I'll take a question. So this active transportation setup that we're seeing here, where the bike path is quite, is very divided and intentional from the beginning. That this will can, do we have the space to continue this all the way to the Government Road, Centennial Way intersection? Is that?
Yeah, yeah, it'll be separated the whole way. Yeah, there, there is an intersection obviously here and then at Aspen, but other than that, currently there's no other accesses. So there is some land that will be developed and how they access their property, you know, there's, there's still tummy turns. But the majority of it is gonna be separated without accesses.
Thank you. And then if this connects how I'm imagining, this would become a very busy intersection. I, I was surprised to not see a roundabout or some other controls here. This will take some of the load from Government Road to access. And what sort of modeling is done in these types of processes to maybe more in the general sense to figure out what's appropriate before it gets opened up for, for traffic and public use?
Yeah, thanks for the question. Any kind of major road upgrades, we do traffic modeling. It's a little more challenging in a greenfield site like this where you don't, you know, if the land's not developed, it, you know, changing traffic patterns is a little harder to, to do. We did do it. The majority of the traffic is anticipated to pass through, go that way and then, and then certainly for the north-south traffic. We are building the infrastructure for a future signalized light at Queen's Way and Pioneer. As part of that traffic analysis, we did look at a roundabout or traffic signal. In the end, there was land issues, operational issues with, and cost issues with building a roundabout initially. So we decided on a, on a signalized intersection. At, at, again, at this location, the, the traffic analysis indicated we didn't warrant any kind of more upgrades than, than kind of a T-intersection. As far as, as far as the design at Government, we, we have looked at both an inter, a signalized intersection and a roundabout. But we've only have a concept study at this point. Really, we're gonna dig into that.
Any further questions at this point? We're gonna go, we're gonna recess again and then we're gonna come back at, at, near the skate park and the new affordable housing project. Is that?
Right beside the affordable housing project on the Discovery Trail.
Perfect. We're in recess. We'll see you that show. Thank you. Welcome back to Committee the Whole. We have, we're at a new location. This is just behind the new Spirit Creek Affordable Housing Project. And I'll turn it over to staff to fill us in on what's happening here.
Yeah, thank you. So we're on the Discovery Trail. The district is currently in design to upgrade this section of Discovery Trail. Behind us is, is the, the new sort of Spirit.
Spirit Creek.
Spirit Creek Affordable Housing. So that, as part of their project, they are building a, a portion of the Discovery Trail. So the Discovery Trail is actually changing alignment a little bit here to, to incorporate that direction. So what the district right now is doing is we're designing the connections, the Discovery Trail connections on the other side. Our goal is all ages and abilities, so it's gonna be a three-meter paved, lit pathway. Our intention is to certainly do construct some of that next year. Certainly the connection to the, the high school and the, and this complex. Depending on, on funding and projects next year, we'll, we will potentially move further, build the, the upgrades further north as well. To what extent is still being determined.
Counsel, questions at this? Counsel French?
So with what I just heard there, are we going to have two pathways? Or will the existing be decommissioned and allowed to return back to nature? What happens with that?
Yeah, thanks for the question. Through the chair, the, the current plan is to leave the existing pathway. It's, there's no plans that I've seen at least to decommission to it. There is some, the, the, the old riverbed creek there is expanding its banks. The intention is not to, to fix it, so it's, it's actually starting to erode some of that trail. And which was part of the decision process to, to, to move it away. It is, you know, obviously sensitive. So we are, we have no intention to decommission to it, but I don't anticipate it's gonna be there forever either.
Okay. Yeah. Counsel, any, oh, Counsel Anderson.
When the Spirit Creek Housing Project was being discussed and presented by Mr. Buxton to us about a year ago, a question came up, I raised the question of the future of the crossing of the slough to the high school. And I recall, Doran Gunn, you mentioned that there's still some planning work to be done. That is, at that time, it still needs to be finalized about what the future alignment might be. And the purpose of my question at the time was to inquire whether there may be some prospect of replacing the culverted crossing with a bridge crossing for fish habitat benefits.
Thank you for the question. Through the chair. As part of this project, we did look at the current width of the culvert. So our, our first kind of analysis was, could we build a three-meter-wide paved pathway on top of the existing? And we can. And so we have a limited budget. We're, we're using the existing infrastructure. Sorry, can you hear me? We're using existing infrastructure, so we are planning on just using the culvert. We do not plan on, on building a span at this point. It's not to say something that we couldn't do in the future, but as far as our budget in the active transportation realm, we did not have enough money.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions, I'll take a stab at one. So the new alignment for the, for the path, will it be just behind this building? Or does it somehow duck out and go into the roadway or, or whatever's happening in front of the building?
Yeah, it, it connects behind us here to the side of the building. It will cross the, the access to, to the building, so there will be a, a cross. And then it's separated, it's on the far side, on, against the district land there on the far side. So it's just the one, the one road crossing or driveway crossing.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, so we're gonna recess again and we've got one more stop, right? Third Avenue?
We'll stop at Third Avenue at the very north end. There's a gravel area there.
Okay, we are in recess until then. Welcome back to our Committee the Whole Bike Tour. We're at our final stop. We're at the very north end of Third Avenue. And Miss Gun, take it away.
Thank you. So we have talked about Third Avenue in the past, but I wanted to provide a brief update. We've now moved into concept designs. We have a consultant working with us on concept design. Third Avenue is intended to be one of our main north-south bike routes downtown. And so we have, we're asking the consultant to do an interim design and an ultimate design. And the reason for the two designs is that we have a 2.5-meter setback on Third, which enables, as development occurs, it enables us to have more space available for active transportation. So we need a design that any new developments can build on their frontages. But then we also need an interim design that we can build in the existing roadway to connect to that. So it all has to work together. So it's actually a really challenging and difficult project. But what we're seeing so far back from the consultant is looking really great. The bike lane, so there's unidirectional, one on each side, bike lanes that are raised up the curb as well as sidewalks and nice tight roadways, so that should slow traffic as well, and provides a really great active transportation route here. Because we're in concept design right now, we aren't anticipating construction next year. We don't have an exact timeline. We'll wait to see how the the costing works out through the design process. But it could be in the coming couple of years, so 2024, 2025, in that range.
Counsel, any questions here?
Other staff have been working on our street scape design, and so how is this all tying together? Because this could be a very appealing active transportation corridor.
Thank you for the question. So yes, we are working closely with the planning department. For now, some of the really detailed work related to street scapes is not in scope for a concept design. We're just trying to make sure it all fits and kind of works together. When it comes to building, there'll be a detailed design, which will follow the street scape standards, either building through the a development project, building their frontage, or through the capital program.
If I may, I just wanted to mention while we're here, that we're also working on getting connectivity from Third to Buckway. So that's, that would be in all uses. Like right now, it's just pedestrians and and bikes, which is good. But we actually, we know that the intersection at Cleveland and Buckway is already at capacity at at times of the day. We're gonna have a new bridge coming over over the Mamquam Line Channel from that end, and having better connectivity through this part of town is gonna become really important. And another access to downtown, which people like to talk about a lot, so we are, we're working on that. And we're in talks with the appropriate authorities on that right now.
All right, seeing no further questions?
Just maybe you could clarify that this isn't district land. That would be easy. We could do it, but it's not ours.
Exactly. It will, there's a, there's a few things that that are raised with this with this concept. One is that this isn't district property. In fact, it's property that's under a development proposal right now. And then the second piece is that getting a vehicle crossing across CM tracks is is a mighty feat, so.
On it, but there's lots to do.
There's lots to do.
Fair point. Counsel, anything, anything further? Do you have any comments or wrap it up? Okay, so with that, I guess I'm looking for a motion to terminate, which was, Counsel French? Counsel Stone, second on that one. Any opposed? There we go.
What's the time?
Thank you.